All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to October Lake Mills Board of Education meeting. Our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Could we rise and do the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to call the meeting to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Don Delaney?
Here.
Rachel Davies?
Here.
Robert Demperio?
Here.
Donna Tremis?
Here.
Richard Mason?
Here. Verification of meeting notice?
Yes, the agenda was submitted to the Lake Mills leader and posted at the library, the post office, and the Bank of Lake Mills on September 28th, and it was also placed on the school website.
Any agendas, agenda revisions or approval? Any revisions, approval, or take a motion?
Move to approve the agendas printed.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions, anything else? Good, that's unanimous. Community input, do we have any? Community input?
I am not aware of it.
All right. We're to go to the board reports. And it is my pleasure tonight to give a service award for 25 years of experience. Isn't it interesting? Cory, line up. I'm not going to stand here alone. You're here. All right, I'd like to read something about Cory. It was the summer of 1992. Cory's son Nathan, is this Nathan?
Yeah.
Nathan?
That's my Nathan.
All right. Was about to enter first grade. So that was a while ago, right? Her daughter Dana was heading out to kindergarten, and Ann and Lake Mills leader caught Cory's attention. Lake Mills School District was looking for reading teacher assistants to join the staff in the upcoming school year. It was a pilot program funded by Chapter One. What an ideal opportunity. It was a chance to be a part of her children's school, teaching a subject that was near and dear to her heart, and that's where it all began. It was a perfect fit. This job enabled Cory to work with students on their reading development, encourage them, build on their skills, and watch them grow. This job enabled her to instill a love of reading with our smallest of learners. This job enabled her to celebrate as a child successfully read a challenging passage, seeing the excitement in their eyes. This was not a job, it was a joy. When Nathan was off to middle school and Dana was in fifth grade, a full-time position became available at the elementary school. It was the hardest decision to make. It would mean leaving the reading program, something that she loved. Though her role had changed through those years, she was still called upon to work with students in the reading, which was always a plus in her day. With employee turnover and restructuring of staff, eventually Cory was again back with the reading program, full-time and happier than ever. And that's where she is today. Her own kids have all grown up, but now she has a precious grandson, and guess what? He loves to read. In conclusion, here's a quote from Cory. "Twenty-five years truly went by in a blink of an eye. I've been honored to work with wonderful people, many of whom are my lifelong friends. We have a staff that is dedicated, caring, and make it a joy to work alongside each and every day, everyone, every day. So many children have passed through these doors. I consider myself fortunate to be part of their educational foundation, but it's not only the instructional side of it, it is also the nurturing of those tender souls that are in our care. I remember once saying that the most significant memory of their school days was not what they learned, but how a teacher made them feel about themselves. That was my quest in this journey." So with that, Cory, we have a plaque that says, "For excellence in education, Lake Mills Area School District presents, presented to Corinne Twells for 25 years of service, presented on this ninth day of October 2017." So, congratulations. One more? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to go back to the reception area if you want to. I mean, this is going to be an exciting board meeting, you can stay here too if you want. Either one. Mr. Demperio, facilities now, you have to top that.
It's going to be hard to top that. But I think I'll wait till the room clears. On September 20th, the facilities committee met with our construction management firm, Myron, and the architectural firm, EUA. Several things that were on our agenda for the meeting. We looked at the updated projection of enrollment compared to what our actual enrollments have been, and what they are looking at down the road. And we found that there were going to be several points where our projected enrollments were going to be greater than our capacities in not only the high school building, but further down the road in some of the, in the other two buildings. So we talked about potential ways to address that, and it looked like it was going to be a multi-phased approach, with the initial phase dealing with the high school, not only the anticipated immediate enrollment growths, but also to make some programmatic changes that would affect this building and make some improvements. We also were cognizant of the fact that there would be some pressures coming at the elementary and at the middle school, and those would be handled in subsequent phases. We talked about a number of alternative ways to address those, talked about how best to balance that with the current debt that we have, and how that would balance out. And we came to some tentative conclusions, but we realized that the best thing to do would be to have a work session with the full board to fully discuss and talk about those, so we would be much clearer as we move forward. There is still consideration of looking at if we are going to do something, that a November 2018 election would be the appropriate time for any initial phases. So, we have another meeting coming up on the 18th of October, where we expect to get some more detailed information that we can share with you at a subsequent work session. And we should probably try to figure out when that would be convenient to have as well. Perhaps sometime in November would be a good time to do that. So, that would conclude my report.
Any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
Going back to the last meeting about roofs. How long should a new roof last? How long, how many years?
How long should a new roof last?
Yeah.
Typically roofs are bonded for 10 or 20 years. And should they last that long? Yeah, they should. Some do not.
Is that what happened with the auditorium roof?
That was caused by wind damage.
Okay.
Which lifted the roof, and we are pursuing an insurance claim with that.
We did receive money.
And they're actually working on it right now.
Yeah, well, we got an email from you that says they're doing the auditorium roof, and that's why I'm asking this question.
And that was-
Because I thought we just kind of built the auditorium, and not a lot of time had passed.
And that's been an insurance claim that they-
And that roof had a 10-year warranty.
Okay.
And it was built in 2004, 2005. Time flies. I mean, especially when you get older, time really flies.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Correspondents, do we have any?
We have one note from Tracy Boyd thanking the district for the donation to the American Heart Association in memory of her mom. And she also thanked her colleagues for the presence at her mother's funeral.
Good, thank you. Administrative reports, Mr. Vogel.
Good evening. I have Blaze's report that I'd like to read, and he had play practice, so couldn't make it tonight. So, the school year's off to a fantastic start, extremely successful homecoming, which included a varsity football win against Lakeside, and we raised money for hurricane relief victims while having fun by decorating the school and town with El Cat pride. The homecoming is over, and all the students at Lake Mills High School are still very busy. The musical is getting closer and closer, so everyone involved in this year's production have been hard at work to put together the final product. Football team just clinched a spot in the playoffs with the win against Pointette. The volleyball team is looking towards playoffs and ranked in the top 10 in the state. Dance team are putting in lots of time after school, they were just practicing beforehand, so they continue to perform for every sports halftime. Tennis team just wrapped up their strong season. Boy soccer has regionals coming up next week, and our girls cross-country team, ranked fourth in the state, just won the Columbus Invitational today. So, kids are very busy. Student council has an array of activities and programs that they plan to roll out in the coming months. One idea in the works is a voluntary after-school ride program, where our goal is to break down the barrier of kids being limited in what they participate in due to having them, or having no transportation, which I thought was a great idea. All the students at the high school will continue to lead by example, raise expectations, and present the best the school has to offer. That's from Blaze. Well-written. Just want to give you just a couple of updates. At our September 25th in-service, our staff worked with Garth Lawson, a consultant and director of curriculum from up north. Kind of continuing our work that we worked on last year with grading practices and the document, really giving us kind of a coaching model through that, kind of a workshop model session throughout the day. And he really helped the students on a lot of the questions that they had implementing these kind of things, and really kind of keeping our focus this year to kind of a target-based grading where we have learning targets that include multiple levels of depth of knowledge. And that work alone, and aligning those learning targets with valid assessments, is a lot of work. So that's kind of our goal this year, of giving them their PLC time to work on those things, and maybe some time in the, after Christmas as well. Next week for our staff meeting, our staff is going to have, we're going to have a PADA rep, People Against Domestic and Sexual Abuse, along with Troy A. Strike, a rep from them to come and talk, kind of give awareness of things going on, and you know, it's something I think that's well-needed. I think some of the other schools have gone through that. They're coming October 18th, next Wednesday, to work with our staff. Our goals, I think you have a copy of my, our building goals. Again, they focus on some continuation of things from last year. Again, the grading, the grading practices, some achievement, the learning targets and the valid assessments. PBIS again, kind of implementing Tier One, again engaging the community, a number of different levels. Our ACP work, academic and career plan work, that we're going to be really getting in motion this month. And kind of my own personal goal as far as working with the facility needs of our high school as we continue to grow.
Questions from anybody? Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. Bauer?
This is an actual slide I took from a meeting we had at the very first day of school with my staff, and I'll explain it as we go along. Tonight I'm going to focus a little bit on the middle school goals, and I want to give you a little background of where they came from, because my suspicion is, even as we start these goals, that they're eventually going to lead into future, our future goals. So, at our Badger principals meeting the other day, everybody went around the table and they talked about what everybody's goals were for the year, and people talked about PBIS, and they talked about different things. And when it came to me, I said, "We're focusing on community." And that's another reason I want to explain this a little bit more to you tonight, because of course you focus on community, right? Of course, of course, the middle school's a community, and schools are community, and you do community activities. But this is a little different, because it came very organically from the staff, and all of a sudden it was a huge aha moment at the end of last year. So at the beginning of the year, I developed a leadership team. They were tasked with helping me revise and implement 21st century learning skills. I had an innovation team that was tasked with answering what's the emerging future of education, and in particular, in our middle school building. You can see on that chart there, I showed both of them this chart. The red line is, as in a traditional system, the complexity of the problems that students had to solve kind of stayed on a regular continuum. But what research is showing is that we are no longer on that regular plotline, that the complexity of our society is growing exponentially. And that's not only, you know, around technology, but knowledge is doubling, I think, every three months now, or something like that. All the global connections, all of those different things. Our kids are going to need to solve complex problems that we don't even know exist today. So, we talked about if the traditional system is the red line, and the students are going to be expected to be on the blue line, what fills that gap? I mean, the red line is their traditional curriculum, right? We can't, we can't just forsake that. So what do we need to do to have our students solve more complex problems? So we talked about all the different things that we were doing around personalization, aligning students, okay, aligning students and teachers with their strengths. We did customized learning paths, we did learner voice infused things, we did joy, we did meaning. But all of that was around individual students doing these things, and not about the community. So what we found actually is, in order to solve at that level of complexity, you have to be able to create with other. You have to be able to work in a community setting where everybody can work together and come up with a solution that nobody could have thought of on their own. So, so we, the innovation committee explored what was beyond personalization, the leadership committee reviewed the rubrics, there was global perspective, co-creation, all of those were embedded. And then we did a book study on building equity, and again, the theme kept coming up and up again. We can't solve this by ourselves, we have to do this as a community, we have to, you know, the poverty that's in our schools. I mean, so from one end to the other end, community kept emerging. And then we did a staff survey and a student survey, and the thing they said was lacking, was a sense of community. So I mean, that was just, that was, that was at the very end of the school year, and it was just like an aha for everybody, like, okay, here we go. So, in developing community, we're developing, or working through the complexity that came out of the innovation committee, the higher capability through co-creation that came out of the leadership committee, a place to belong for students and an overall sense of community. So on my goals, you'll notice that my goal, or the building goal, is to increase the sense of community in the building. But also I wanted you to note on those goals, I, we will be primarily focusing within the building, and I had curricular groups get together and said, "I just do something around community, building community in your curricular area." And those are the results they came up with. Science is going to do something around, we need to start sharing materials. Let's become a community through creating a spreadsheet that has all our materials so that we can share, and everybody, we are a science community in this building, and that includes all of the materials and everything. And, I mean, all of them are related somehow to community, that's probably the simplest for me to explain. But please, the teachers did a lot of work around that, both at the beginning of the school year and then last week on September 25th. So please take a look at those and understand that they are very deeply embedded in this sense of community and how they're going to do that at the middle school this year. One other thing I wanted to mention is that on October 25th, that Wednesday, right before we go to that little mini-break, we will be doing again our community service activity with all the middle school students. And I'm trying to work with Melissa on trying to figure out a way, there are 500 students going out with 60 different staff members all throughout the community, and it is quite a feat, and it's very meaningful for us this year. So, we will definitely be sharing our experience with that. Any questions? Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. Mrs. Thompson?
Good evening. Our building goals are also included in your board document today, and I have just a couple of highlights that are relevant to the work of our building. Our school leadership team, a group of five of us, are embarking in a leadership for equity training this year. So there's five different sessions across the year that we'll be going to. And this work is coming out of a staff survey that we took actually two years ago regarding culturally responsive practices. So this is one step in that direction of helping to make sure that we are providing structures to our school environment that are allowing all students equal access to our curriculum, but more importantly, as our first goal indicates, making sure that kids feel happy to come to school and get what they need. So there'll be more on our equity work as we go through the school year. Mindfulness is a big part of our work this year, not only with our students, but also with our staff. And in conjunction with the rec department, we are offering Tuesday and Thursday exercise activities for our staff members. And this yoga is one of them, so on Thursdays, we have over 20 of our teachers who are coming to yoga after school, and it's great to see so many of us coming together as a group, but also practicing some of those mindful strategies in our own practice. This past week, I was able to have one-on-one meetings with all of the teachers within the building. So I met with 39 different individuals throughout the week to be able to just check in with, how are things going, what's going really well, what are you working on, how can I support you? My favorite part of those conversations is just being able to meet individually with staff members to see how things are going. In conjunction with that, this week, we're hosting our data team meetings with every grade level, so now it's bringing the teams together to look at our data. Mrs. Seaver is going to be joining us to present the data, kind of the big picture, where are we, where are we going, and how do we get there? Mrs. Nichols, as our literacy coach, will be working with teams to figure out small group instruction of that, how do we get there, component of our data in our instruction. And that is everything that we're working on so far this month. Any questions?
Questions, anyone?
Thank you. Thank you.
Mrs. Brown?
Hello. I have two parts for you. One, I'll summarize summer school just for a little bit, and then we'll talk about some special education pieces. So I just wanted to let you know that through our efforts this summer, we had about 930 students that attended in one way, shape, or form for summer school, and our FTE numbers were at 79 for the summer. And then around the special ed world, I just wanted to let you know, this past week, we were able to have a transition improvement grant. So this is a two-step process, so we were able to work with a team to gather baseline data on our transition opportunities for students with disabilities. We just met just this last week, and then we'll meet again in the spring to kind of review from the baseline that we took and see how we're making our steps for gain around that area. And then some of the goals that the special education team and myself will be working on this year will be to strengthen school, family, and community engagement, and then for myself personally, to have a better understanding of special education budgets and resources. We'll work to create a streamlined system of sharing information to families and staff, and then also to continue to improve that transition program and services for students with disabilities. Any questions?
Questions? Great, thank you. Mrs. Silverood? Lights?
Hi. So, the state released their data earlier this year than they have in the past couple of years. So they're getting better with data. So tonight you're going to get a data presentation. School report cards have not been released yet. They anticipate somewhere in the middle of November that school report cards will be released. But looking at this data, we can start anticipating what our school report cards are going to say, which gives us some good information. So just a little overview, the big picture summary. You can see, I'm hoping I'm not going to start feeding back here, what the annual assessments are. The students in grades three through eight take the forward exam in English Language Arts and Math. Grades four and eight take the measures in Science. Four, eight, and 10 take Social Studies. The ACT is given in grade 11, and it measures English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Reading and Writing. And then the dynamic learning maps is the alternative assessment for our students with severe cognitive disabilities. So the forward exam, just to give you an idea, we had 723 students in grades three through eight take the forward exam this past year. It's an online assessment. The state believes it incorporates innovative and better ways for students to demonstrate what they know, as opposed to just filling in the little bubble sheets that we probably all had to do as kids. The ACT assessment is still a paper pencil assessment. We had 93 students participate this year, and the students are able to send their scores to colleges for free off of the state assessment, which is, which is a nice feature for them. And then dynamic learning maps, we had 10 students who qualified this past year in grades three through eight, and then 11, if that was necessary, to take the dynamic learning maps. Okay, so what does this mean? The state has come up with ACT cut scores that they consider very rigorous, and they came up with these cut scores in English Language Arts, Math, and, I always get this goofed up, Social, Science, sorry, Science, where they determine proficiency and advancement. These cut scores are different than what ACT considers as college and career-ready. So you could see, the ACT can consider somebody college and career-ready, and our state can still consider them basic. So that's just something to make note of as they, as they do this. Forward exam cut scores are also rigorous. When they set that proficiency and advanced settings, they use the NAPES scores, but they redid this in 2016. So what's really important, as you're going to see, one of my cautions is, in the past five years, we've had five, or three different assessments for kids. We had the WKCE five years ago, three years ago we had the Badger exam, and the last two years we've had the forward exam. So you can't compare one test to another. What you, what I try to compare the best is how did we do compared to the state? Because one, the Badger year, we all went up in proficiency and advancement, but so did the state. You know what I mean? Like, the next year we dropped back down because those cut scores were different again. So it's really hard to compare, we don't have three years of data to say this is how we're doing yet. ACT, now we have taken three years as a statewide assessment. So how are we doing? So this side of the PowerPoint stays pretty much the same in every side. What are we looking at? What are we changing? You know, what are we trying to do? So what you see in the first column is 2015-16, how Lake Mills did, and then 2000, second column is white, 2015-16, how did the state do? So how do we compare? The next one is 2016-17, how did Lake Mills do compared to how did the state do? And then the next two columns are the differences between the white and the blue in their corresponding columns. Does that make sense? So we've got it broken out by grade. What we're noticing is that we are doing better in ELA than we did the previous year, but the state did three percentage points better, where we only did half a percentage point better. So our gap is widening from the state, even though our scores are going up overall. In math, we are starting to do significantly better, which is a good thing. Our scores are getting significantly better than the state. The state stayed right around the same spot as they did last year, but our overall score went up quite a bit. When you look at the science exam, I lost my train of thought there. We're doing better. It's another one that is continuously getting better. When we look at social studies, we had a good year for, just about every year, our 10th grade scores dropped, they're still higher than the state, they dropped. Fourth grade dropped lower than the state, which is a concern for us. ACT, so our score, our number of students proficient and advanced on the ACT is significantly higher than what the state is at, which is something that we are continuously watching, and it's gotten better each year. So that's something to notice. Oh, I should- Oh, I should just point out, I also tried to write down what curriculum resources we're using for, if you look at this PowerPoint at home and if you're curious about that. For English Language Arts, it's a workshop style at the high school. For math, we switched to discovering math this year. And then some of them stayed the same because they're AP courses or higher-level courses. And science was various curriculum uses, they did not change in their last curriculum cycle. But they've changed how they're approaching teaching science, which is interesting. So, this is the point. As you know, the composite score is very important to students. And what their composite score is overall is what they really focus on. And our composite score went up, the state actually went down, which is good for us. And we're hoping to see that increase even more. So, other things that I just want to make you aware that we are watching with the data is cohort comparisons. How are kids doing from one year to the next? So, what the blue represents is how did they do in third grade? And then how did they do in the same group of students in fourth grade? Are they going down, is that group of students going down, or are they going up? We want to see them going up, we want to see more students proficient and advanced in the same group of students. And in three out of our five grade levels that we can compare this data in, they did, which is a good thing. In math, same thing, we're seeing the data go up in three out of five of the grade levels. Different grade levels than in ELA, but still, we're watching that happen. And then we're also diving deeper into our data. How are our students who are considered achievement gap students? The state really has a focus on achievement gap. And what they're saying is there is a traditional achievement gap for specific groups of students. The first group that we're watching is our EL group, our English learners. They've changed from ELL to EL. The state assessment reports have not changed yet, it still says ELL, so it's a little confusing. What world do we live in? Some things to note are that our students, there is a gap there. We're noticing a significant gap between our students who are ELL and our students who are not ELL. So, the first column of data is our students who are not ELL compared to the Lake Mills ELA, or not, who are ELL students. There's a very significant gap there. And as if you look at our numbers of students, we have more kids in the elementary than we do in any other building. Last year, now that it's, that bubble has moved to fifth grade because those were last year's fourth graders. So, 11 kids went from fourth grade to fifth grade this past year. So, where we're used to just two or three students in a grade level, now our numbers are starting to grow significantly, which means we need to really pay attention to how are we doing with these students. Pretty much the same thing in math for EL students. Gaps are closing in grades three through five, but in six, seven, and eight, we're still noticing a huge gap. Social Studies and Science, we're seeing that some gaps are there, not as significant as in ELA, which is kind of surprising. And then our ACT, there are very few students at the high school with EL that are taking this assessment. So, it's really hard to say how we're doing. They did not meet proficiency, but when we look at their composite scores and their scores in every area, they're doing better than the state is doing. So, that's something that we are also watching. Talked to Tara today a little bit. The next achievement gap group that we're watching is the economic disadvantaged comparison. And this is our largest group of students in an achievement gap group. And this is an area where we are noticing some huge gaps, especially in ELA areas, where we are not doing as well as the state. And we're also noticing gaps between our students who are economically disadvantaged and our students who are not economically disadvantaged. Same thing in math. Social Studies and Science, not as significant, but there is, they're not doing, there's gaps between our kids, but they're doing better than the state in this area. And the same thing with ACT, not as big of a gap there, which is good. Students with disabilities is a third area that we are watching for the gaps. And we are noticing significant gaps here, again, and in math, and in Social Studies and Science, and on the ACT. So, and this one is also another one that's interesting. There's not a lot of students who take the ACT in the high school level this past year, but enough that we can look at the data and say, there's significant gaps between our students with disabilities and students without disabilities, but we're performing better than the state in this area, again. So, what are we doing to try to address these gaps? Because that's the work. And I think you heard all the principals say, one of the biggest things that we're doing is working on building community, creating a culture of high expectations. However, we're addressing equity in our buildings, that's really important. We're holding data meetings. I've been meeting with staff already, started at the high school level to look at the data, show them where the data is, help them create SLOs that will impact the data. We've increased our ELL staff, we've increased our special education staff. We're implementing a new math curriculum at the middle school, which is bringing professional development to our building twice a year. Today, I spent the day with a CPM math coach at the middle school who is going in and observing and giving teachers immediate feedback. So, not only are they going out for professional development to learn how to use the program, but professional development is coming in and coaching them on the new math curriculum. And I'm meeting monthly with the Math Action Team at the elementary school to watch the data very specifically at the elementary school. And then as a district, I am working with Garth Larson through PLC format for curriculum directors. And then Kayla is working with Garth Larson with his staff grading practices and best practices for what to do. Any questions on data?
What on data?
I have one.
All right.
I just want to ask you, you didn't really talk about this, but maybe you know. In the governor's budget, it was about, it said that the civics test
Yes.
now needs to be passed at 65 rather than 60.
Yes.
And then it says you have to go back and do it again, even back into last year? If you don't get to 65?
Our students have to get a 65 or better
Okay.
before they graduate.
And what if they don't?
They keep taking it. They can take it as many times. We do not have many students who do not get a 65. And our special education students only have to take the test. That's just what's required. Unless the IEP team, unless they take like the DLM, the Alternative Assessment, then they can write that they don't have to take the assessment whatsoever.
So, it's very few of our students that will have to. Right now, we're giving it at the sophomore level. And then we record those scores. And so, we've told that staff and the guidance department to go back and check how many students, and they'll have to retake it. It's very few.
Very few, they're not worried about it at all.
It's kind of a self-correct, it's a computerized test.
No.
No.
No, this is just, it's 100 questions. It's 100 questions, they can set it up as a Google format if they want to do it on the computer, or they can do paper and pencil. There is no requirements with a civics exam other than it's a 100-question.
It seems this test is kind of flying under the radar.
It's not, we don't report how the child does. We just report that they passed on their transcripts.
Okay, that's what I wondered too.
Yeah.
There is, you either pass or you don't pass.
Right.
And if you have to retake it, do you have to retake all the sections? Or just the section you didn't pass?
Just the whole thing.
It's just 100 questions.
Yeah, I've seen it once. My other question was, and it kind of relates to this, you mentioned here, you talked about the ELA, or the English Language Learners?
Yes.
And that they're having some issues. This year, we added time to have more assistance. Does that seem to be helping?
I'm going to say that this is
Or do we need more time?
I would
Or do we need a program?
We're working on developing the program. That's one of, if you look at my goals for the year, that's one of my goals to work with Tara. The state is coming out with new guidelines for how to develop your program. And so, we're kind of waiting, we've been coached by the CISA II ELL coach to wait for those guidelines to come out from the state and then write our guidebook off of that and develop our program off of that.
Because when we talked about this, we were not opposed to getting the staff that we needed to help us in this area.
Yes, I think with our growing numbers, we're going to need more staff. I think that that's a given. And it's hard when you have kids out in K through 12, but just a couple of kids here and a couple of kids there, it's hard to meet all of their needs. So, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so Mrs. Silverood.
Yes.
You gave us a lot of data
Yes.
to review, and you've studied that quite thoroughly.
Yes.
So, after doing that, what surprised you the most? Good, bad, or indifferent?
What surprised me the most was our ELA scores not coming up higher. I see really good practices going on in our district. And when I talk to other districts who are high achieving districts, and I can look at, I've compared district data in CISA II. And I talk to them about what are you doing for your ELA program? They all say workshop, they all say Lucy Cawkins, they all say, so it's like we're doing all the right things. Why aren't our scores showing that? So, that's the biggest surprise to me.
And when was the test given?
Last spring.
Last spring.
March, April.
So, the new staffer that we added, Dr. Thomas, doesn't show up yet. Should show up this year, going to change, ELL, correct?
That's what we are expecting.
Hoping, right? All right. Any other questions?
Yes, I have one.
Yeah.
We often see the category proficient, advanced reported. Do I understand that there is another category called basic?
Yes.
Which is just below this?
Yes.
Is that a significant category?
This, so there's four categories. There's advanced, proficient, basic, and
Minimal.
Minimal, thank you. They keep changing that word because nobody likes that word because it never has a good connotation. So, basic basically means they have a basic understanding of the subject, not considered college and career-ready. So, that's, if they can score proficient or advanced, that means they're on track to be college and career-ready. If they're below, if they're basic or minimal, they are not on track to be college and career-ready. Does that help?
I guess it does, but I'm wondering, is that a score to be totally discounted?
No. And what's interesting is when I work with the teachers right now when we're developing SLOs, we try to target students that are actually in that basic range to try to bring them up is the focus of increase them from basic, especially those kids who are almost there. Like, how can we get those kids there? How can we get them achieving where they need to be?
So, they're close?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I can also explain that when they do the report card and the achievement scores, if you score advanced, you get one and a half points for every student who scores advanced. When you get proficient, you get one point. When you get basic, you get .5 points for every kid. So, that's the other thing, like, yeah, I kind of calculated it for one school already to see. And we'll see if I'm right or not because I've never calculated it before it came out. So, it'd be interesting.
Anything else? Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Yes.
Lights, please. Mrs. Brockert.
Okay, I have just three pieces of information. The first is enrollment. Our third Friday enrollment date was September 15th. And I had laid out for you in the board packet our September 15th enrollments. I had it categorized by residents who are attending other districts, be it open enrollment, or HSED program, or the CAP program. And then non-residents attending our district under the open enrollment program. And then the final column was residents attending our school district. So, just so you could see the different categories. Our enrollment is, when we looked at it with the FTE, our full-time equivalent, it ended up being the same as last year. And again, this is looking at all our resident students attending any other districts or programs and our resident students attending our school district. Because that's the number that's used for calculating our revenue limit and as well as our equalized aid. So, those are the two columns that I'm focused on for that. And you can see from the printout that, how the grades by grade level, the students to that detail. The second piece is the revenue limit update. We're not final with it yet. We were able to update the revenue limit with the actual enrollment number. We have our new equalized value, which went up 2.6%. And we also have a couple exemptions that were added to the revenue limit worksheet. I had applied for transfer service because of a special needs student who was enrolled in our program and needed a one-on-one aid. So, to help support the cost of that aid, we processed transfer service paperwork, and it was approved. We also have an adjustment because of some prior-year open enrollment students that weren't counted in the official count, so we did get some partial adjustment for that. The, and then when looking at updating the enrollments, we are looking at about a $60,000 increase in our revenue limit from what was calculated at the annual meeting time. So, because of those exemption adjustments and because of a slight increase in our enrollment based on what was estimated in the summer, I did state, you know, our enrollment did not go up over last year, but in the original estimate, I was looking at a slight decrease in our enrollment. But the overall three-year average was not a decrease, so. So, because of those adjustments, we're looking at about $60,000 more. The pieces that we're missing yet is that private school voucher aid deduction. And like last year, it was a little over $30,000. And we're obviously missing our actual October 15th aid certification. So, hopefully, those pieces will receive by Friday or Monday at the latest. And then we'll provide you with updates on that. Are there any questions on either the enrollment or the revenue limit? No, we talked about it at the finance committee meeting too. Then the last little bit is just October special meeting date. We do need to certify the levy by the end of the month. So, I'm hoping that we could schedule another meeting this month. I had just suggested the 23rd or the 30th because those are Mondays typically when we meet, but it does not have to be a Monday. I just want to make sure, you know, if not all the board members, the majority of the board members are there to finalize the levy and finalize the budget for this year.
I am not available on the 23rd.
How's the 30th one?
Depending upon the time.
What time do you have to have?
There's
I mean, what time do you have to have?
5:30.
5:30?
You'd like to have it at 5:30?
Yeah.
Rachel, 5:30?
30th is better for me, too.
Huh?
The 30th is better for me, too.
Okay, 5:30, is that good?
Sure, sure.
Donna?
Hang on.
All right, there you go.
Thank you.
That's all we're doing is setting the levy that night?
No, we're going to have some finance.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to have a finance committee meeting that night.
After?
But you can't stay after.
You can't stay, yeah.
Have it second, have the finance part second.
Right.
Okay.
Is that okay?
So, 5:30?
5:30, and then we'll have, go into finance.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thanks for
Probably by 5:45.
Okay.
Will that be right, will you be done?
Hopefully.
Okay. Waiting for 5:45 for the finance committee meeting that night.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mrs. Strike.
Okay, first of all, I wanted to thank all of you that attended our activities last weekend. We celebrated our distinguished alumni with Mr. Roger Gores. And that was here at the high school, and it was really a lovely event. And at the same time, we also celebrated the Community Service Award. And that was Brian Conrad from Sentry. So, that was a really fun evening. And many people attended between the two events. Also, last week was School Board Appreciation Week. So, we wanted to tell you that we do appreciate you and all the work and time that you share with us. And there's a small gift at your place there this evening from all of us at the school district. This week, mid, this week, right, is National School Lunch Week, and the proclamation is included in your packet. And that recognizes the significant contributions of the school nutrition staff and the importance of nutritious, well-balanced school lunch to the health, well-being, and education of our children. Also included in your packet tonight is the Fall Recreation Department brochure. So, you can take a look at that. If you'd prefer a hard copy, we can certainly get you one of those as well. Last month, we had the first reading of all of the policies. And those have been available for your review for the last couple of months. The one that was missing is the wellness policy. So, I needed to submit that to the DPI. It was a tool that we had to use. So, I took all of the information from our old wellness policy and answered the questions. That's now been generated in the DPI format and included here for your review. There's nothing new there. It's just in the new format, and now DPI has that on file, that we have submitted that. That will be processed and put into the NEOLA policy format. If you approve all of those later tonight, that'll all magically happen, and those will be on our website soon. And then finally, And then finally, I've just included my goals for the year. They mirror yours. But what I've included there is all of the tasks that we will work on to accomplish the goals, as you have laid out. Again, those are to support achievement. And as you heard tonight, our focus will definitely be on those three gap areas. Special education, English language learners. And also, you've heard from all the buildings that equity is certainly an issue, and that will help facilitate gaps in those three areas. And as you know, with the restructuring of the administrative team, it is our hope that we'll do much more, much deeper analysis interpretation and application through data. Through data, we'll have more time to devote to that. Communication, some of that stuff is already started. You can see with our new Facebook page, our new consolidated into one, just rave reviews. I actually get emails and calls from people that they really appreciate how we've tied all of that together. And if you're not following us on Facebook, please do so because there's really interesting things several times a day. There's some other activities that I'll be finishing that I did not accomplish last year that I've included there. A third area is facilities. Lots of work to do this year on facilities, and our facilities committee is very active in all of that. And finally, finance, particularly in that area, I want to complete the process of the policies, move into administrative guidelines. That work will start actually Wednesday. We have a huge work session on that. And then we will relate the policies, the administrative guidelines, into updating all the handbooks to reflect those new reference points. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Alright, we move on to action items. I think we could probably take these three meeting minutes together. Approval of September 11th Regular Board of Education, approval of the Finance Committee proceedings, and approval of the Facilities Committee proceedings. So, do I have a motion?
Well, I'll try. I'll move approval of the September 11th, 2017 Regular Board of Education meeting, the September 11th, 2017 Finance Committee proceedings, and the September 20th, 2017 Facilities Committee proceedings.
Second.
Moved and seconded and approved the three minutes of the Board of Education, Finance Committee meeting, and Facilities Committee meeting. Questions on any of those? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperial?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of vouchers and invoices.
I move the board approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $1,330,436.73 for the month of September 2017.
Second.
Moved and seconded and approved the vouchers and invoices. Comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperial?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Now normally, we do the approval of the Treasury's report next. So, do we have a motion for that?
I move the board approve the Treasury's report for the month of September 2017.
Second.
Moved and seconded and approved the Treasury's report. Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Robert D'Imperial?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of new policies.
Okay, so all of the policies, like I said, have been available for your review and have been reviewed by the policy committee. The one that we need to have a decision on tonight, as you approve all of these in bulk, hopefully, is anything that relates to weapons on school grounds. Now, it's absolutely, students can have no weapons on school grounds. You have the ability to change that for staff members or visitors. So, as the policy is written at this time, it prohibits any professional staff, and then in parallel policies, visitors and support staff, from possessing, storing, or making or using weapons in any setting under the control. But it does not apply to unloaded firearms in locked vehicles or locked, or in a locked firearm case, or separately stored ammunition. Okay? So as it's written right now, the classic example that comes up is the staff member who had been out hunting in the morning properly stores the firearm and locks up the ammunition separately, that that's okay. So that's how it's written at this time. If you would like to change that and prohibit anyone from having any weapon in any way, I've had, I have that motion for you there as well. I just, that little gray spot that you see right there, thank you, Mr. Frost, he did a poll in the Lake Mills leader, and that, I don't know how many people responded, but the poll results are there with yes, leave them at home, 47% of the people who responded to his survey. And they're okay if they're unloaded, unloaded and secured properly, 57.7% supported that. So, I will leave that to your discretion. And like I said, both of the, both of the, the motion in both forms are there for you to use.
Could I ask a question of clarification?
Yes.
Currently, the language would allow unloaded firearms in a locked vehicle? Or in an unlocked vehicle in a locked firearms case?
Yes.
Is that, am I reading that correctly?
For staff. For staff.
Correct.
Staff, visitors, and support staff. That's currently how it's written, that they could have them.
That's the way, that's the way that is currently drafted.
Yes.
Okay.
So there would be motion one. Second motion. If you object to that, you'd have the second motion. So. You need a motion?
Yeah, I have a question.
You need a motion on the floor, and then we can discuss it.
I move the board approve all board policies as presented using the NEOLAs format, including the wellness policy.
We need a second.
Second.
Alright, moved and seconded. Now, discussion.
So an unlocked vehicle could have a secured... Okay. That's why we currently have a policy stated that way?
Currently, we don't allow anything on school grounds by anyone.
Currently, we don't.
When we approve these, now approving this whole set of new policies, you could give the exception that for staff, visitors, and support staff, that they could have an unloaded firearm in a locked vehicle or locked firearms case with separately stored ammunition.
So at this point, nobody could have firearms?
Right. And the expectation is if you were in that situation, if you were in the hunting example, you would park on the street that day. As policy is right now.
So it's on school grounds?
On school grounds. Are, do you?
Is it limited to a parking lot? Because could you take your locked gun case into the building?
No. No, this is, this exception is... Well, that's a really good question, right? We wouldn't allow it.
And we're also saying, this is separate from what he just asked, but we're also saying in this language here in the second paragraph, that those things are allowed as long as you can't see it, like no one would know that it was there.
Right. No, this only applies to parking, it would not be allowed in schools.
Okay, so the building is prohibited?
Yes.
For everybody?
Yes.
The parking lot, this is, this exception would only be applied to a parking facility.
Right. Now, remember, in the policy, it says that something could be brought into school with the permission of the administrator, like if you're bringing an antique gun to show in social studies class, or if there's something going on with our, with our trap shooting club. If there would be some need to bring something in to demonstrate that, then the administrator of that building could get permission for a firearm to be brought in that way.
So what we're talking about now is the addition of this exception. Right now, nothing. We're talking about the possibility of adding this exception.
Yes.
What precipitated adding something? What was wrong with nothing?
Because this was the NEOLAs format, and a majority of their school districts have allowed this. Particularly northern states, as you mentioned last time. So if you want nothing by any person in our parking lots, then we would use the second motion there.
So, does everybody understand that?
Yeah.
No? So the first motion is allowing staff to have a gun locked in their trunk or someplace else on school grounds. Okay? The second motion does not allow them to do that. So we've got, we passed the first mo, oh, well, not passed it. We've proposed the first motion and seconded.
I'll call for the question.
Wait, wait, wait. The second one says this prohibition does not apply to unloaded firearms. The second one is where we would add in the...
So the second one allows it?
Yes.
No, you're right. That's not right.
So the motion on the table does not allow it?
Correct.
Everybody in agreement?
So the motion on the table does not allow any firearms?
Yes, period.
Anywhere.
Anywhere.
So the second suggested motion is the permissive one?
Yes, for staff.
For staff.
Because we already have on the books for students.
Right.
Right.
But she added the word visitors with something.
Well, it's, staff is in policy 3217. Support staff is 4217. And property is 7217, and property would cover visitors. So...
If we vote for this motion, we're saying nobody brings anything on our school grounds.
Correct.
Yes. And that's the motion that's on the table right now.
That's the motion on the table.
And the question's called, so...
I call the question.
Megan, roll call, please.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperial?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously.
So no guns on grounds, okay. We will make that right.
Or in cars.
Or in cars. Right. Okay.
Alright, approval of youth options.
As you can see, there's a short list of youth option students for this year, and you'll see that all of them revolve around classes for certified nursing assistant program.
I move the board approve the five student requests for youth options for the spring semester of 2018.
Second.
Moved and seconded and approved youth options. Questions on that? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperial?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of early graduation request.
This is for a student who is currently in the HSED program at Madison College, and she is doing exceptionally well and could graduate early to move on to her next educational option, as she writes in her letter.
I move the board approve the early graduation request as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded and approved the early graduation. Questions on that? Comments? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperial?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of support staff letters of assignment.
There are three support staff recommendations attached to this motion.
Move the board approve the following support staff letters of assignment to Ms. Nicole Garman as special paraeducator at the middle school, Mr. Michael Winter as special paraeducator at the elementary school, and Ms. Denise Royt as bus driver.
Second.
Moved and seconded and approved the support staff letters of assignment. Questions on those? Roll call, please.
Robert D'Imperial?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of activity account.
So there's yet another club at the high school. It's the Fashion Club. And they're requesting approval so they can set up an activity account, which means raising funds and spending funds.
I move the board approve the student activity account for the high school Fashion Club.
Second.
Moved and seconded and approved the student activity count for the Fashion Club. Alright. Any questions, comments?
Looks like they have a lot of community service projects in mind.
And they're affiliated with a national group, and there are boys and girls who are interested in being in that club.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperial?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular resignation.
This is for the JV basketball coach. This is a new teacher. She coached in the fall, and she'd rather devote her time to being in the classroom rather than taking another coaching experience.
Move the board approve the resignation of Ms. Sierra Curran as girls JV basketball coach.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resignation. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperial?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of gifts.
Several very, very generous gifts this month, which are listed there for you.
Motion, please.
I move the board accept the following donations and thank the donors for their generous support to our students. A $500 donation from the Lake Mills Area Community Foundation to the school food bank, The Mill. A $1,000 donation from the Sons of the American Legion Squadron 67 to the school food bank, The Mill. A $200 donation from Selgin Incorporated to the high school homecoming activity account. A $100 anonymous donation to pay for student lunches. And a basketball shooting machine donated to the high school basketball programs valued at $6,000 from the Lake Mills Three Versus Three, Three by Three Basketball League run by Jeff and Melissa Wagner.
Second.
Moved and seconded and approved a gift. Questions or comments on those? We think the community generosity. Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert D'Imperial?
Aye.
Donna Thomas?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
And Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. November board agenda items.
One thing that I would like to share with you specifically in November is I'd like to create a section in the employee handbook that's specific to middle managers. That was missed when that was written. And so we are crafting that language now with Bob Butler, and so we will have that hopefully for a first reading at our special meeting, and then we'd vote on it in November. Megan, are there other items in November?
Is it the audit report ready?
No.
Like to set a date for the work session on facilities.
Recreation program thing?
Finance? Or approval, possibly?